Everybody ready? You're good. Welcome to the October 20, 2020 Board of Commissioners meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pages, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers. And if you'd like to speak today, please get a speaker request form that's on the back of the bookcases by Kevin Toome and Kevin Carley. Ms. Holly will take those speaker request forms since she's at the left of the dais today. We'll have a moment of silent reflection and a pledge of allegiance led by Sheriff Toome today, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have review and approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Oops, Ms. Holly, you were going to.
Good morning, Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask the board to add the approval of the third quarter unemployment voucher to the, uh, to the agenda today in the amount of $27,101.92.
Just a second, Ms. Holly, do we want it under, do we have auditor items?
Just vouchers, so you can make a separate motion.
It's okay with the secretary.
Okay, I'd make that as part of my motion.
Twenty-seven thousand, say it again, Holly.
$101.92.
Okay, and that is for what again?
Third quarter unemployment.
Thank you. So we have, in addition to the vouchers and moved by Drews, second by LaCroy, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Do you need to take roll call?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Haddock?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next will be the consent agenda by Ms. Hennings today.
All right. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items: approval of the minutes from the special meeting of September 29th, 2020; approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of October 6th, 2020; number seven is to approve the operating transfers from the general fund to the following funds: E-911 Fund, the Emergency Management Fund, the Fire Administration Fund for the second half of the 2020 budgeting operating transfers; number eight is to acknowledge and authorize the chair's signature on the Center for Tech and Civic Live Grant Award submitted by the auditor; number nine is approval to apply for John T. Vikurvich Foundation grant for 2020 and 2021 by E. Health and Human Services; number 10 is approval of the Adopt a Highway application for a portion of Old Folsom Road by Brandon Reich; 11, approval of the Adopt a Highway application for a portion of 161st Ave by the Two Ts Custom Knives; number 12 is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of September 2020; and number 13 is approval of the fourth quarter Local Emergency Management Planning Grant with the state of South Dakota submitted by Emergency Management. And at this time, I would like to ask the board to pull number seven, please.
Okay, that'd be under Holly. Is there anyone from the public who would like to remove any items five through 13? Not if there's any Commissioners who would like to remove any items five through 13 besides number seven.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Item nine.
Item nine?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion.
Move to approve.
Moved by DeSanto.
Second.
Second by LaCroy. Any discussion? Not, roll call, please.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Haddock?
Aye.
Motion carries. And we do have item seven from Holly, Ms. Holly Hennings, please.
Yes, item number seven, we need to adjust the amount in the E-911 Fund down to $319,513, which will reflect the reduction of the 10% in the budget.
Okay, so everything is correct except.
The E-911.
Okay, $319,513.
Correct.
Do we have a motion to that?
So moved.
Second.
Drews, second by Ross Connect. Any other discussion on number seven? If not, roll call, please.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Haddock?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Commissioner LaCroy, number nine, please.
Thank you. I see Barry's out and out, it's the only reason I pulled this was so we could, I think it's worth cause to give a little more information to the people that'll be streaming in later on, because I think this is a very worthwhile grant, and they've done some great work.
Sure, so, good morning, I'm Barry Tyce, the Director of Pennington County Health and Human Services, and we started accessing what we consider the discretionary grant just over a decade of go, a decade ago through the Vikurvich Foundation. And I always talk pre-pandemic and post-pandemic, because pre-pandemic, this funding primarily is used for deposit assistance. And over the years, we've done what we would look at as studies within our office, follow-up phone calls to see how we can make the greatest impact with this funding, because Vikurvich Foundation provides us with quite a bit of latitude on this. For this, typically, the funding will last us a year, and it usually rolls over into the following year. This year, because of the demand placed on our office for rent assistance, primarily rent assistance and some utility assistance, we went through this funding much sooner than we normally would. And it wasn't as broad of coverage for assistance. So where there was IDs and birth certificates and work tools and things like that, it really was rents and mortgages for individuals who may not have qualified for some of our other funding options that have, you know, specific criteria as it's outlined in their monthly income. And so this year, we'll ask for a little bit of money. We like to be prepared, and we anticipate, just like you all do, the impact, economic impact is going to essentially impact our community for quite some time. And so we've asked for more money than we have in the past to help us kind of offset that rent and utilities. And as we continue to work through our case management services with all these other programs we do in Health and Human Services, then that gives us a little bit of flexibility to cover what we're dealing with now, and then to, of course, help with our other programs. I don't know, Commissioner LaCroy, if that's.
Thank you, Barry. I mean, that, that's, I just wanted to make sure that people can understand what's going on. I personally had referred some people to you, and I'll pass on their gratitude to Health and Human Services for helping them out through their time in need. It really did help them. And, and the process that you guys used through the mail and email and stuff worked good for them. And so I just wanted to highlight that what you're doing for our community is helping and, and there is gratitude for what you guys are doing.
And I appreciate those comments, Commissioner LaCroy. We're really lucky with the Black Hills Area Community Foundation, the John T. Vikurvich Foundation, and it's a good time for me to let you know that the Black Hills Area Community Foundation, along with Elevate Rapid City, donated to Pennington County another $25,000 to help during this time. So without these foundations helping us, you know, it just casts this broader net, and we're lucky. We, we've done a very good job as a community. As I always say, it's easy for me to get up here and talk about these things. I'm not the one that's having to do all the hard work like our caseworkers are. And so just today, they're sitting in a training as we speak for South Dakota CARES Act dollars too that will be coming our direction. So again, this net gets cast larger and greater, and so we can make a, you know, deeper community impact. So we're, we're very fortunate.
Thank you, Barry.
Thank you.
I'd move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by Drews. I'd also like to say, Barry, you guys do a wonderful job through this COVID mentally, and, and you already know for people and economically, they need your help, and you guys have been there for our community. So we appreciate you as a Commission and as a community, because I always hear lots of good things that you guys do in your care campus, and also with the sheriff and his group with the detox and the other areas. Care Campus has been amazing for what it's done since we've opened it. So we appreciate you all for what you do over there at the care campus. Thank you. Roll call, please.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Haddock?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good work, Barry.
Thanks, Barry.
Next, we'll have item 14 on the regular agenda items, Dustin Willett, COVID update.
Good morning, Chair members of the Commission, Dustin Willett, Rapid City Pennington County Emergency Manager. I'll keep my comments brief and then entertain or do my best to respond to any questions. I think most of the community is paying attention and aware of the headlines and aware of, of numbers. Most people track the, the reports that come out from the Department of Health and that are reported on by local media. Those numbers reflect that the COVID-19 disease is, is moving through our community. We still are on the upward trajectory of, of the current peak that we're in. The concern right now is, as it always has been, is, is how is our healthcare system impacted? And we are certainly seeing the highest numbers that we have seen since this began in our, in our local healthcare system. Numbers are actually down a little bit today over what they've been the last couple of days. The concern though is, is it, so far, and, and again, keep in mind that the, the sample, the data sample that we have is just, you know, this, this year from when it, when it started in our community in the spring. But typically, what we're seeing is, and it stands to reason, we see an increase in positive tests, and somewhere around a, a week or so after that, that increase in positive tests, we see an increase in hospital admissions with COVID-19. And then, again, very, very loosely, another week after that, we see any deaths that will result from, from those that were, were infected. So those, those, those increases happen about a week after each other. So you see an increase in positive cases, about a week later, you see that impact the healthcare system, and then we, we typically see fatalities related to that, that increase a week after that. So the concern right now is, is we're seeing higher numbers of positive tests than we've seen in the past, which, if the trend continues, and if, if that, if that projection holds true, then we'll continue to see hospitalizations increase. So right now, kind of all eyes are on our healthcare systems across the state and certainly locally, just to make sure, I make sure it might not be at the right sentiment. But the concern is that healthcare is able to provide the services it needs to the community. The, the, the challenge right now isn't necessarily physical space. There's plenty of physical space in our local facilities, beds. The, the challenge is staffing, making sure we have the right amount of staff in the medical facility to take care of the influx of patients. Monument is, is certainly holding their own right now. But again, as we see the, the number of positive cases in the community increase, we can look forward about a week and, and anticipate that we'll have increased hospitalizations. So all eyes are on the healthcare system, and, and we're doing what we can. What does that mean for citizens and visitors in, in the area, Pennington County and Rapid City? So, you know, people get fatigued when they hear the same messaging sometimes over and over and over and over again. But we started this out, one, by saying protect healthcare, and two, by saying we need to flatten the curve. And we never really had much of a curve, so there really wasn't much to flatten. But if there ever was a time for the community to, to pay attention to infection control principles, if there was ever a time for the community to wash their hands, stay home when you're sick, observe social distancing, this would be the time to do that. So we certainly have a, a curve, a peak happening in our community, and it would, it's incumbent upon all of us, and it would behoove all of us, to do what we can right now to try to flatten this particular curve. This is what we were talking about, this is what we're trying to do. So infection control is, is more important now than it's ever been in the community, even if people might be fatigued with the messaging and fatigued with some of the practices. The one thing, and I'll share this anecdotally, there's no data that I have to back this up, but I've been contacted multiple times by private businesses recently, and even government offices, in one theme, and again, this is anecdotal, this is just a handful of cases, but, but it seems like we're having quite a few contractions and then close contacts and quarantines, because people continue to come to work ill. They have a sniffle, they have a cold, they don't think it's that bad, they come to work sick, and then a day later, it gets worse, and they go in and get tested, and sure enough, they were positive. So if I could just implore people, I mean, they're, they're basic, basic things, but they can have a huge impact. If you're feeling ill, if you're feeling sick, don't come into the workplace, don't go out into the community, protect yourself, protect others, and, and practice good hygiene. And then the last point that I want to make sure gets, gets put out there, that's incredibly important, is, is if you have not yet gotten your, your influenza vaccine, please go get that done. So incredibly important year to be vaccinated against the flu, as we start to fight that concurrently with COVID-19. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
And sure.
Commissioner Ross Connect?
I was in Tennessee and Arkansas last week, and both those states, it's a government mandate that you, you will not go into any building without masks. It's just kind of a different environment here. And then I've also heard that there could be a second wave coming through the United States relative to COVID-19, and that the worst 12 weeks could be the next 12 weeks.
And.
Just hearsay.
Yeah, well, numbers, looking at numbers and looking at past events, again, some of the models, a lot of the models do, do predict that, that, that the winter is going to be a, a pretty tough time across the United States. We're seeing upticks in numbers across the country, not just South Dakota, not just the Midwest, although the Midwest is certainly seeing a, a significant impact right now, as is South Dakota, North Dakota, and surrounding states. So to think that, that the worst is over is, is, there's probably some measure of naivety in that. So I would say that we're, we're continuing to see increases in cases, for sure.
Thank you. Any more questions? Thank you, Dustin.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dustin.
Next, we have 15 A, essential county positions, and this is with the sheriff. Kevin Toome?
Good morning, Kevin Toome, Pandy County Sheriff. Appreciate you hearing this item and this. I'll give you a little bit of background, and I know John's here and Stephanie, our HR person, they can help fill in the gaps or correct me on what I might explain wrong with this CARES Act and everything else, trying to explain it as best I understand it anyway. Seems to be a little confusing at times, but really, my memo that I sent is about what I call fundamental fairness. And under the CARES Act, they designated essential and non-essential employees. If you're non-essential, we gave people access to kind of six criteria, they could use this 80 hours of leave. If you're essential, you didn't have access to that 80 hours of leave. And I would like to see the county make that 80 hours of leave available to the essential employees in the county, just like the non-essential, but don't do it under the CARES Act, because there's different criteria, they can use that 80 hours for taking care of a sick person, another sick family member, daycare, sorts of things. I think you need to keep the lane very narrow. Back when we started down this path of COVID, initially, the Commission did designate 80 hours of, you know, sick leave for people with COVID. CARES Act come along, so you, you replaced it with the CARES Act. But I think an unintended consequence of CARES Act was it penalizes the essential employees. Let me give you an example of an employee, two employees in our office. We have one employee, his son also works for us. The son lives at home with his parents. The son is tested positive, so he's off per our protocols at home with his parents. His dad works for us, his dad's essential, has to come to work every day unless he's symptomatic. His mom works for the private sector, is non-essential, she got 80 hours of leave to stay home because the son lives with them and is exposed. So there's a distinction in the essential and non-essential. And I don't think that was ever the intent, and just the impact, so far, just on the sheriff's office side of the county, we've had 61 employees test positive. And I asked John this morning, the balance of the county is 13 employees test positive. And our spike correlates with the spike we've seen in our correctional facilities. You know, we're running 35 to 40, you know, positive COVID inmates in the jail. We've had, you know, COVID clients and inmates at the jail, JSC, and care campus, where it's impacted the staff. So we tell essential employees, you have to come to work. Because if we let our essential employees, if they're exposed, go stay home for two weeks, we'd have to close the jail, nobody'd be there to work. So we tell them, you have to come to work, and you're locked up with people that are COVID positive. Now, we have PPE, you know, protective personal equipment, a lot of good protocols in place, but sometimes, you know, it just happens, you can't avoid it. And some people get contact outside of work that, where they picked up their COVID-19. So it doesn't always have to be a, a work situation. The, you know, we talked about cost a little bit, the question was raised about cost. Of course, this is exactly what the COVID dollars are for, reimbursement to cover costs related to COVID impact. It's not exactly a dollar-for-dollar impact, if you will. I mean, another example, if we have a five-year employee, and say they have 150 hours of sick leave in their bank, and they get sick with COVID and have to take 40 or 80 hours off, and you grant this, they wouldn't have to use their 150 hours, it would just come out of that 40 or 80, whatever they needed to get past their symptoms and come back to work. That employee keeps their 150 hours in the bank, but if they're a five-year employee, you're seven, eight, they leave, it doesn't cost the county anything, because they don't get paid for that sick leave. You don't get paid for your sick leave till after 10 years, and you get 25%. So unless somebody stays long-term, one, the impact is spread out over many years, and the other thing is unless you stay long-term, you don't recover any of that. And we've had about a dozen employees, they've either gone with pay or without partial pay, you know, because of the circumstances we're in right now. I just don't think that was ever the intent, to penalize people that we say that are essential. And essential is not just us, I think I counted on the list with the one memo, there's, I think 18 departments and elected officials that are impacted by some that are designated essential. So anyway, I'll shut up and stand for any questions, and I know I've talked to other elected officials and department heads, and they may have a comment or two as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Jay?
Mr. Chairman, Jay Aldrin with State's Attorney's Office. I just wanted to step up for a moment. The sheriff explained his position very well, and Mark Vargo and myself have talked about it as well, and we feel the same way, frankly. You know, these are folks in the sheriff's office, law enforcement, essential out there 24/7, 365 to protect us. They're subjected like none other in the county, or at least certainly as much or more so than others in the county to COVID. It seems counterintuitive to, in essence, as the sheriff said, to penalize folks that are deemed essential but can't get the same kind of coverage or benefit that non-essential do. So my whole purpose being here is just to say I see the logic, it makes sense to me, and, and the State's Attorney's Office supports that. Thank you.
Are we?
Madam Chair?
Hold on, just a second. Commissioner DeSanto, the, when would the starting date be? I mean, are we backpaying people that already took off? Are we starting October 31st? I mean, when are, when are we, if we decided to implement this?
Madam Chair, I mean, in, in the memo I requested, it's September 6th, retro back to September 6th, and that correlates with the start of our spike, if you will. There's some employees that are going to be not receiving the benefit. We didn't go retro all the way back, and I'll get a little squawking from them about that, but we had to pick a date, and I think a reasonable date, so we did ask the Commission to consider going back retro at least to September 6th.
Mr. Carley?
Good morning, Kevin Carley, Director, Pennington County 911. I just want to express my support for this issue as well. Obviously, this has had an impact on my department. We've had several positive tests, and my employees continue to do everything we ask them, where they come to work every day, they strive to meet the mission, they are fulfilling everything we ask them to fulfill. We're taking all the precautions we can within my department, I think, to try to prevent the spread, but there's no complaining, they've had great attitudes, and I think it's only fair that we do this for them as well. And I agree with what the sheriff said on the funding, with the money that we're getting back for wage reimbursement through the CARES Act, I wouldn't have any problem in my department covering any leave that would come as a result of this. Thank you.
Does anybody know, we don't get paid back for essential employees, do we? Just non-essential? Mike, by chance, do you know that answer? I can ask John. John? Because we got reimbursed for non-essential, I didn't know if we got reimbursed for essential employees if we're paying up to 80 hours.
Good morning, Commissioners, John Morale, Pennington County HR. So the answer is yes. Under the federal guidance, there is no reimbursement for government entities, but under the state's CARES Act, the reimbursement is available for the dollars that are spent to provide COVID relief, if you will, to employees. So there's two different pieces at work. Again, the federal does not provide it, but the state, in order to comply with the money that they were granted from the federal government.
Whether they're essential or non-essential, they, okay.
It won't matter, you bet, either way, that we'll be able to get the CARES dollars back for that.
And do you have the numbers that, on the non-essential, John, that we have spent already up to this point?
It's just a little bit over $18,000, ma'am.
Okay.
We've had, on the non-law enforcement pieces, I don't know if I brought the right forms, we've had about 47 people that have been exposed. Only 36 have actually applied for pay. So some of it was exposure that, no symptoms, no contact, if you will, direct contact. We've had 13 positives as of this morning. Of those 13, six are currently not eligible for, for payment under the, the FF-CRA, but if this was approved, those six could potentially see reimbursement for the time that they weren't paid.
So let me ask you something, John. So if you do this in 2020, you're going to have to, because COVID is not going away. We'll be doing this in 2021, 2022. I mean, we're just doing it for COVID, we're going to start doing it for influenza. I mean, guys, because we get reimbursed for COVID, so that's my main reason too, that if they have COVID, you get reimbursed back for it. But when does that stop? Maybe it doesn't stop. I mean, this, in this case, and, and I understand the fairness of it, of both sides, I'm just saying, when do, when do we decide that we're not going to do essential anymore, and then it's going to be unfair if we decide, okay, in our budget, we don't have that money to do essential?
No, I, I think, great questions on there, if you would, Madam Chair. The, the guidance that we have right now, the federal laws, as well as the state reimbursement process are valid through the end of this year, December 31st.
Right.
I personally believe that we'll see something happen November or December to extend that, because COVID is really just, we're seeing that second cycle, as Dustin mentioned. But at this point, the, the laws are such that that reimbursement is available through the end of the year. If those COVID dollars that the state was granted aren't spent by the end of the year, then there is no reimbursement moving forward at this time.
And bottom line, I think personally, I think it's a virus, most everybody is going to get COVID, to think it's going to go get less, it's not going to. But since we've seen the dollars at 47 people at 18,000, and we've seen some of the numbers that maybe Cindy can share with the public as well, even if we did have everybody that ended up with COVID, the reimbursement that we've got so far, plus the money probably in the future that we would get for this, would cover it substantially, if I'm correct.
I, I believe so, also.
Mark had a question.
I just, Madam Chair, I had one thing.
Yes, sir.
In the motion, the correspondence was what John said, my request was just to the end of the year, and then reevaluate it, because it is a pandemic, it's unique from flu and everything else, so I think you evaluate it as you go. And the request was at the end of the year, and like John said, if there's additional funding, fine, if there isn't, then it's a different decision, different decision. So thank you.
And Kevin, I, I'm not against it, I'm just, I just ask questions. And then the other thing is to prove it up to 80 hours instead of just 80 hours, if that's okay, because that's what you have on your paper here. Yes, sir. Okay. Commissioner DeSanto, please.
Thank you, Commissioner. Actually, you, between the, you and John and Sheriff Toome, you've answered the questions that I was going to ask. Thank you.
Commissioners?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I, I think this is a good idea. I mean, I, I've always had troubles with whom I determine who's essential and not essential. I think we're all essential. I think we're all essential to operate in a business, and so I've always had a kind of trouble going through that, but I think this is where, I think there's some great thought, it's going to be reviewed towards the end of the year, and I, I'm for the motion, or motion hasn't been made, but the proposal that came forward from the sheriff.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskinick.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Moved to approve by Roskinick, second by LaCroy. Mike, please.
I, I just wanted to add that I think that this is really critically important to buildings and grounds. Thankfully, we have not had a positive case within our department yet, but I expect we'll get one. But example that, I, we have a new employee, there's expectations that we have, we have to keep things running, we have to send, send people into places where there are obvious, you know, there's people sick within them or have been in them to either clean them or repair equipment and such. They're expressed real hesitation in the sense that they don't have time available to do this and what the impact, financial impact is going to be on them. So I, I think this is a critically important thing for us to, to make sure that our people are covered when, you know, I feel like we're, they're often on the front lines of this, trying to deal with and make sure everybody, everything keeps running and everybody's, we do the best we can in terms of cleaning and everything else, so.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Duce.
I should have spoke before the motion was made. John, I got just a couple of questions relative to, I'm not, I'm not sure even that the September ninth date is appropriate, I'm not so sure, we shouldn't go back further than that. Do you have any idea what the numbers would be if we went back to?
I, I don't. I wish I could answer that, Commissioner. I, I know that our positive cases were more recent. We only had a few out of the gate, and our first three requests for paid time were due to family care issues when the schools closed last spring. Most of this has happened just in the last several weeks, we haven't seen a lot before that. I don't think you're going to see-
But we had, we had a number of people that had to quarantine. Now, for those that, you know, were able to work remotely, maybe that wasn't a big issue, but we did have a number of employees that had to, had to quarantine, maybe even more than one time because of that issue, they couldn't work remotely. So there was some impact there also, was there not?
Yes, yes, most definitely. So I didn't bring the chart that shows the time that they've requested paid leave. Again, most of it would have happened midsummer through current date. Prior to that, we really didn't have any, any symptoms or exposures in town. It was pretty minimal. The big thing, again, initially for us, was the fact that the schools were closed and people had to scramble to find some way to provide care for their children. But again, with a back date, I don't think it would be any harm at all if you were to push that back to make it from the date that we started doing the COVID Act back in April. Under the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, or FFCRA, the commission and any governing body has the right to determine that even those that are deemed essential are eligible for that eighty hours of pay. You can differentiate between the type of benefit and who qualifies. So even though they've been identified as essential, you as a governing body also can say, okay, we're going to provide those eighty hours to people.
Up to eighty hours?
Up to eighty hours, yes, up to eighty hours, my apologies. But I, again, I don't think there's going to be a great difference in the dollars from September date to back to April. I don't think it'll be much.
Commissioner, I just have one question. If they used already paid leave, do they get that paid back? Because then you're going to go into, you know what I'm saying, having to go back, and if they had paid leave, pay them for that, and then pay them for, you see what kind of-
Sick leave is put in for.
Commissioner Drews.
I understand what you're saying, but I do look at it as a fairness issue for our employees-
Yes, sir.
-as to how they had to deal with this. And I don't think it was, certainly not our intent to have them, those that even had to quarantine, that never had the virus, had to quarantine because of it. I don't think it was ever our intent that they would expect to lose pay. And I understand they may have taken, you know, vacation time or sick time in order to keep their pay going, but I think that's a question that still needs to be answered as to what that number would be, and, and quite frankly, the number isn't quite as critical to me as whether or not it's something that's fair to do for the employees.
Right. Bottom line is that, I, I don't think we have a process and policy today, Kevin, to do this, because I don't think there's a hur, a hurry to do it today, because we can always come back and say, okay, this date needs to be March first of 2020 and not September sixth. So I don't think, it doesn't sound like the commission is against it, they just kind of want to see some type of policy, and basically, John was right, and Cindy, we need to kind of discuss a little bit more of where we really want to go with it, because this is a, this is a good thing you brought up, but it needs to have more information to it.
Madam Chair, if I may, just to answer Commissioner Drew's question, out of our sixty-one employees that have tested positive so far, from March through August, there was thirteen of them. So the bulk of that has come in September and October. And as to the urgency of this, I guess, I would ask the commission at least take some action today, even if you want to go take it back to September sixth and revisit further back at the next meeting, because we have employees right now that are new, that can't pay their rent on their apartment, because they can't get a paycheck, because, you know, they leave and they're out sick with COVID. So I would ask you to take some action.
Okay. Cindy, would you like to weigh in on this a little bit before we make a decision on what we don't know how much something's going to cost?
Good morning, Commissioner, Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. The reason that we picked September sixth for the date to go back to is because we have submitted all the reimbursements to the state for payroll up to that point.
Thank you.
So we were trying not to have to go back and re-figure, recalculate, and do all of those things that would be necessary to recapture those dollars if we go back any farther than the sixth. Obviously, if the commission decides to do that, we will put the work in and get it done.
That makes sense.
Madam Chair.
Mr. LaCroy, you haven't spoke yet.
I, I'm, I'm in support of what's in front of us, was doing something today to get this going. I understand the dates and so forth, but we want to get this done before the end of the year, and we've got the date there. I think we could always do some research and see if we're, but I think you guys did your due diligence to this point to come up in front of us to move forward with this, and so I'm in support of the motion on the floor.
Madam Chair. Commissioner DeSanto, then Commissioner Drews, please.
I also am in support of this, however, I do want to point out how lucky we thought our Pennington County employees to even have the benefit of even asking for this, for that matter, because to remind everybody, the private sector, correct me if I'm wrong, doesn't have this benefit. And this is another, I, I wouldn't call it a perk, but it's a benefit for the county employees and, and government sector employees that, that they can access that the private sector cannot. But I am in, I am in support of it, and I'm in support of doing it today, and then if we need to change and go back, then we do that later.
Thank you. Commissioner Drews, please.
Cindy, just a quick question on that. So you indicated that you would put in the effort to go back, you know, if that was the decision of the commission. But if we didn't go back and do it, I mean, we could still do it, it would just come out of our, I mean, the county would have to come up with the, the cost, we wouldn't have any reimbursement.
Correct.
Okay.
That makes-
So, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskinick.
So my motion was to approve through September the sixth, through the end of the year, December the thirty-first, and then, and after that, then we can reassess where we need to go, depending where the spend, pandemic takes us. I think it's essential that we take care of our frontline people, and I'm not so worried about cost, I'm worried about taking care of our employees at this point. We can always reassess it after the thirty-first.
Thanks, Commissioner. And that's approval up to, up to eighty hours, am I correct?
Up to eighty hours.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
I would, I'm going to support the, the motion that's on the floor, but I would like us to review those from prior to that-
Thank you.
-for our next meeting.
Okay. I agree, and for me, it is about the dollars as well. I mean, it's always about the employees, but we also need to be cognizant of our budget and make sure we're straightforward with it. But the other thing is, and that's what I have talked to Sheriff Tome, we got reimbursed for the COVID, and we have that money in there to support our essential employees, so I'm also in favor of that, because that, that to me is everything for our budget and for our employees. If we can support them and also support our budget, for me, that, that's crucial. So that's why I'm in support of this as well, so. Cindy, did you have anything else to share, or John?
I was just going to add that, to date, we've got about six million dollars in reimbursement.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, Mike.
Mike? Oh, your left, Mike.
I, I just wanted to echo the sheriff's comments in regard to, I think it's really important to take some action today in regard to this. It's, it's, our, our staff is, is feeling stressed about the potential that they're going to go without pay, so.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And the discussion was very good. I always ask lots of questions, and so does this commission, we're not against anything, we just kind of want to make sure we've got all our bases covered and there's good discussion. We do have a motion by LaCroy and second by Roskinick. Any other discussion?
It's made by Roskinick, second by LaCroy.
Okay. Moved, made by Roskinick, second by LaCroy, Ms., thank you, Ms. Kara. Any other discussion? Commissioner DeSanto?
I'm good.
Okay. Roll call, please. DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Roskinick?
Aye.
Haddockock? Aye. Motion carries. Item B.
Just not taking a second to thank the commission, that means a lot to the employees of Pennington County, so thank you. The next one's much simpler, I think, anyway. Some surplus items from search and rescue. We spent the last year kind of cleaning house, if you will, and getting us more room in the shop, so working with Martin Jurisch to do an online auction like we did with the kitchen laundry stuff at the jail, and just want to surplus those items, so.
Anybody have questions or a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Moved by Roskinick?
Second.
Second by DeSanto?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews, please.
I just, I appreciate the fact that you do that, housecleaning, instead of a collection of items that we need to find storage for, that, of items that probably never get used again, so thank you.
We run out of room, so, yeah.
Thank you. We do have a motion, roll call, please. DeSanto? Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Roskinick?
Aye.
Haddockock? Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is item from Emergency Service Communication Center, Director Kevin Carley.
Good morning, Kevin Carley, Director, nine-one-one. What we have before you is a request to surplus our 2011 Ford F-250 pickup. It's the shop truck that our radio technicians use. It's got a hundred thousand miles on it, we're having some mechanical problems with it, and we originally had planned on replacing it this year. We have the money in our budget, but then when you asked us earlier because of COVID to put any major expenses off, we put this on hold, but we'd like to move forward with that now. We have a lot of infrastructure throughout the county that those guys are responsible for maintaining. It's important that they have a vehicle that we can rely on, so we'd like to go ahead and move forward with the surplus of that. F-250 and the purchase of, of a new 2021 F-250.
We have a most, the first motion-
So move. So declare the vehicle surplus.
Yes, sir. Moved by Drews, second by Roskinick. Discussion, or roll call? DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Roskinick?
Aye.
Haddockock? Aye. Motion carries. Motion to, Mr. Carley.
Thank you.
No, motion to.
Sorry, I haven't-
To approve the purchase of a following vehicle.
Okay. Yeah, so we've already specked the vehicle out. The pickup that we have now just had a regular box on it, and it didn't work very well for what the guys wanted to do, because every morning they'd have to load their equipment in the back of the pickup. And so we specked this one with a naphide box on the back, it's going to be much more suitable for the work that they're doing, they'll be able to keep their major tools in there. And we're estimating the service life of this vehicle will be eight to ten years, so we think it's a good investment as well.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'd move to approve the following service for a box, 2021 Ford, two-fifty-four-by-four crew cab, under state contract, seventeen-three-four-three from Key Ford, with the trade-in of twenty-two-thirty, and Northern Truck Equipment, seven-eighty LP steel service body for eighteen-three for a total of forty-two-three-thirty.
A second.
Motion by LaCroy, second by Drews. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
Kevin, just a quick question. Is this, do you have inside storage for this at nine?
Yes, yes, we have two vehicles and we store them both inside our radio shop.
So you can leave all your equipment and stuff in the vehicles?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. You asked my question, because I thought if you put all that in the back and then, and somebody decides to have a heyday on your truck and borrow it, good question, thank you. We do have a motion by LaCroy, second by Drews, please roll call. DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Roskinick?
Aye.
Haddockock? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day, sir. Item seventeen, Superintendent Joe Miller. Item A, please.
Good morning, Commissioner, Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway. Up in front of you first is a, an amendment the DOT requests our signature on. This is hundred percent paid by the state for the engineering services. John from Ferber went and met with the state several times to, to get this amendment done. They did a lot of work that was not foreseen, obtaining the Forest Service easement and amongst other things. We paid, you know, a good portion of that for the right-of-way stuff that we requested being changed earlier on in the year, so this is the, the state's portion of that, so I'll stand for any questions.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskinick.
It's the same one that we attended at your office, and they were reluctant to do anything in the beginning, and now they're going to go a hundred percent?
Well, this is, they're not a hundred percent, they're agreeing to pay the, the thirty-two thousand dollars.
Right, right.
Right. So that's their portion of it.
Well, good work.
That's a lot of work from John at Ferber, meeting with, with the local government, and they got it done, so.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Move to approve amendment number two to the work order, LGA-0217 for additional design services for Sheridan Lake Road reconstruction project.
Second.
Second.
Second by Roskinick, sorry, DeSanto, you're a little slow. Motion by LaCroy, second by Roskinick. Any other discussion? If not, roll call, please. DeSanto?
Aye. Deb said I was a little slow, so I-
Drews? Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Haddockock?
Aye. Motion carries. Item B, please.
Item B, uh, this comes to you, uh, earlier on in the year pre-pandemic, uh, we had requested services for a design on a salt storage building, uh, to store our, our de-icing sand, salt mixture in, indoors. Uh, currently, we have the facility to store about 325 ton of salt indoors, which leaves our sand-salt mixture outside. Um, if you drive around the state, the DOT has several facilities to, to store their salt-sand mixture. That way, the, you know, the snow this last weekend would leach a lot of the sand or a lot of the salt out of the sand. Um, so this is something that's been needed in the highway department for several years, in my opinion, and, and we're trying to move forward with that construction in 2021. We have set aside a, a good chunk of, of money to get this building built in 2021. Um, we think right now the bidding environment for contractors filling up their schedules, um, now would be the time to bid, uh, to hopefully get the best price, um, for construction in 21.
Do you have a motion or discussion?
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy?
Second.
Second by Ross Connect.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto first.
Joe, I'm just curious, um, does EPA have anything to say about whether or not this, this stuff's covered? Obviously, it needs to be covered because it cakes. Like you said, it leaches. Um, have, have we, in the state of South Dakota, ever had the EPA come down on us about storing it out in the open?
Uh, I don't know the answer to that question, Mark. I know we have a detention pond on our site, um, that when the new building was built, our new shop was built, was required, um, a detention facility, uh, pond on our site to try and gather all the salt that was leaching from this pile before it ever enters the stormwater system. Um, but to answer the EPA question, I don't know that answer.
Okay. Yeah, and that was my second question. Do we have any kind, type of a lining that we should put it on? But you kind of answered, we've got a, a pond that it flows into.
Correct.
Don't we put mag water on roads?
We do. Uh, we have put mag water on gravel roads to alleviate the dust, so.
So that's a lot of leaching of mag water. If we put mag water on roads, that would probably be a lot more EPA than, and I don't know if there's standards on that either, but just food for thought.
Me neither.
Okay.
I think Ron.
Thank you, Joe.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
I was just gonna say, we've talked about this in the building committee and, and by doing this, I think in the long run, this is gonna pay for itself because we can sit there and buy, uh, the economy of scale, buying volume, store it, uh, without, uh, and gonna be a lot easier to work with when it's not, uh, all caked up. So, I think it'll pay for itself. Don't know how many years, but, uh, I think it's a good move.
I think it'll pay for itself. Uh, each year, you know, we, we scramble to find places for all of our vehicles indoors during hail season. So, I think that's another use for this, uh, facility is to get those vehicles when it's not being, you know, not, it's peak hail season and we don't necessarily have all the material in there.
Right.
We can store vehicles indoors and save some money that way as well.
Commissioner Drews, please.
I, I think, I, I was just gonna respond to the EPA question. I think EPA is more concerned if it's located close to a waterway or someplace where it would leach into or it could, uh, create other, uh, harm, uh, because of waterways or whatever. But just the, the fact that it leaches when it's open is good reason to have it covered, so.
Right. And we're losing, you know, we pay good money for that salt. I think it's a hundred and some dollars a ton. I don't recall exactly, you know, and every time it gets wet or rained on, it leaches some of that material out. So we're losing money there too, so.
I guess why that came to mind is because we're talking about some mag water on different roads. And I remember in, this is a salt building, I understand, a storage building, but, um, if you think about it, Rapid City as well, when I was on the council, we had worries with the mag water leaching into the water systems. And I think it's something we should check into, putting mag water or salt or anything else we're using to make sure we're following the standards on that. Because even with standards, uh, we seem to have a few issues, just to make sure it's not going in or doing any to, thing to the systems. Also, um, killing trees was a big issue with, uh, putting mag water or salt on, on roads. Um, we had to replace trees in Rapid City because of, uh, mag water. Do you remember that, Lloyd?
Yeah.
So, and if we're going in the county and doing that, we need to be careful on some of that as well, let alone, uh, Mark was right, making sure that it isn't going into our water system, so.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I, I'm in full support of this. I mean, you got, we're gearing up for the winter time too and, and do the same thing by the salt and the sand and at least we've got something covered. But I mean, absolutely with the retention pond with the new, that was part of the thing with the new construction of the shop building is to get prepared and get this stuff. And I think this is some great foresight on your guys' part, bringing this forward last year and, and moving forward with it. You know, I've never seen anybody maintain vehicles as well as, as our county shop. I mean, when you're after, after you're done with doing your salt and stuff, you come and rinse them off. And that's how vital and how dedicated you guys are. And I'm glad that with this, like you just said, the facility's gonna be multi-purpose because come summertime, we're gonna have, you're not gonna be storing that. You'll, you'll clean it up. I know you guys will and straighten it up and build it. This is a multi-purpose building, so I think it's a good move for our part. Thanks.
Discussion? Motion by LaCroy, second by Ross Connect. Roll call, please, Ms. Kara.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Haddockock?
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Ms. Holly Hennies.
Uh, Commissioners, today we are just seeking a motion to approve the chair's signature on the Festival of Lights Parade application and the waiver and to approve payment of the $25 entry fee from the commission office for the 2020 budget.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. I would make a suggestion, if, uh, if that's okay with our commission, that we all put in like five bucks instead of taking out of our commission budget. Anybody have a issue with that?
No, I think I paid it last year, didn't I?
Okay.
We paid it out of the county budget last year. You paid it the first year.
Oh, the first year, okay.
Yeah, but we paid it out of the county.
Is everybody okay giving Holly five bucks?
I'm fine with that.
I was gonna make the motion and have Lloyd pay her 25.
Okay, go ahead. With the, uh, understanding that each of us will give you 25, or 25, $5.
And you're also looking for Christmas lights, right?
We are. We are attempting our biggest float yet. So we need as many lights or cold, hard cash as anybody's willing to give us.
Just as long as the light's worth. They don't have to be.
Yes, we need as much. We do, yes.
Okay, so basically to approve the chair's signature on Festival of Light Parade application and, and that's about it, Holly?
And the waiver. Yes, ma'am.
And the waiver. Okay. Thank you.
I'll cover the commission.
Is that a motion?
Move to approve.
That's funny on the camera. Moved by Ross Connect. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second. DeSanto, you're slow on the draw there, buddy, today. Motion by Ross Connect, second by Drews. Um.
Like Holly said, we're attempting our, our largest float yet. We're gonna do a motor grader on our transport vehicle. Um, possibly need, looking for lights and, and generator. You know, it's gonna take more than one generator to power all these lights. Last year, we ran into issues with, with our snow blower. So, um, I know we've got a couple of generators, but we may need, end up needing, needing three or four, so.
As a generator?
Madam Chair.
How much is a generator?
Two, two to 500 to 1,000, depending on how much you want, right? But we don't need to purchase one. We just need to borrow it for the.
I see what you're saying.
The sheriff, the sheriff.
No, I'm on your mind.
The sheriff auction, there's two generators, uh, up for auction.
Does he?
Yeah. We'll have to check into that if it's.
Yeah.
An option.
That'd be, uh, what's your name? Joe's, uh, Joe, you wanna ask the sheriff if he can?
Yep, I'll do that.
Check on those generators?
And we're gonna borrow the portable sound system from the fairgrounds.
Awesome.
To have music this year, so.
They might have generators too, by the way.
We'll check into them too.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
So, we do, go ahead.
I know you guys wanna make the motion, but I just wanna, uh, express my appreciation to the highway department and Holly and all you guys that have worked so hard on this. I mean, the last two years placed first, I believe, uh.
Oh.
And, and not only that, but it's also been a gathering time for the people in the shop working together. They bring food and kids come in and it works. And I think that's, that's the sole purpose of it. But you guys have done an outstanding job going forward with this. And I just want to express my appreciation for it.
Has been, has been a motion by Ross Connect and second by Drews. Any other discussion? Roll call, Ms. Kara.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Haddockock?
Aye. Motion approved.
Okay. The next item is just a quick reminder for the board and the public that our next meeting is going to be on Thursday, November 5th, due to the general election.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. And then let's, if we have a motion to take five?
Go move.
Moved by DeSanto?
Second.
Second by LaCroy. Go ahead and take five and then come back. All in, roll call?
DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Haddockock?
Aye. Motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, okay.
I make a motion that we go back in the regular session.
Motion by Drews, second by Ross Connect. Um, roll call?
DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Haddockock?
Aye. Motion carries. Um, first, we have items from chair, commission members. I have items from the chair
is, I met with Lilias Jardine yesterday. Um, I had went to the city council and they were talking about the watershed. Um, all I said at the city council basically was we needed more information and they needed more information before, uh, we decided that that would be a good idea. Um, at this point, um, she's sending me information that I will give to the board. Uh, there was a list of questions. Um, what were sent Wednesday, um, was told she never got them. Um, but we had some good conversation. Lilias is very nice to me. Um, but it sounded like they wanted a Pactola, Pactola Recreation Area with a mineral, mineral withdrawal around Pactola. And if you look some of that up, um, their goal, um, I don't think is achievable by, um, where they're going. And I said that maybe they needed to talk to, um, school mines. They needed to talk to the Forest Service and some other areas before they move forward on this because their goals are not going to, um, go with the process, basically, and procedure that already is laid out by, uh, federal, state, and even local governments. So, um, just encourage her to go back and, and specify because a lot of it was all over the board until kind of nailed her down on what her bottom line was. So, we had a good meeting, uh, very nicely, but, um, some of that might be coming forward to the commission because some of the, uh, ranchers and some of the other groups, um, might be bringing a resolution to the next meeting on, um, basically supporting the watershed, but not taking away their rights. So, just a heads up. Uh, does commission members have any meetings or anything that they went to that they'd like to share to that is not on our committee reports? If not, let's go to Mark DeSanto first.
Okay, I attended the library board meeting last week. Not a whole lot to report there.
Can't hear you, Mark.
The director of the library board?
Yes, sir.
Um, where he did her review. It turned out great. Um, they're just moving along as they, as well as they can with limited access and, and that. Um, went to the extension meeting or attended the extension meeting and everything is looking good there. It looks like we're gonna have about $1,800 left in the budget by the, by year end. Um, and so we decided to, uh, put new knobs on a gas stove rather than replace it, um, that they've got there in their kitchen, been needing to be done for quite a bit. And that's money on their, their other stoves to get the, to get it recalibrated so that it was cooking correctly. It, it didn't seem to wanna.
You keep fading out, Mark. You keep fading out on your mic.
Okay. Um, and let's see, uh, fair board meeting. Went to the fair board meeting. Obviously, they're behind, um, quite a bit. The fair set them back substantially. We did have some good turnout for other events that were better than last year. Um, shows and, and horse events. And, uh, it's, it looks like we're probably gonna wind up, they're probably gonna wind up asking us for some additional funds to get through the year, but they're not sure how much yet and whether or not they can get COVID money at this point in time. Um, but, uh, they're still working on that. So, you won't see them until they've exhausted all options as far as trying to figure out how to, how to make it, uh, as far as budget is concerned. And, uh, the, at this point in time, the stock show, uh, is on. And, uh, we have to take, um, to say that it's not going to move forward as usual and haven't heard anything about limiting the numbers of people or anything like that. So, uh, obviously, we would recommend social distancing and masking up, but at this point in time, that's not a requirement. Um, so stock show goes on as planned. And, uh, hopefully, we're gonna have a, a better year and a more free year next year to be able to do what we do at the Central States Fair to, to keep things going. And that's about it.
Thank you. Ross Connect?
Well, I want to say congratulations to our building committee who successfully closed on the 725 North Cross Street property last week while I was in, out of state. I'm glad that Lloyd could make that closing. I think, uh, everything turned out real good. Uh, I'm anxious for the new buyer to get relocated in the facility. But we will no longer be paying utility bills on a monthly basis or insurance. So, uh, it's just nice after two years to, uh, have that project, uh, closed. And so we're moving on to a potential purchase of a property on St. Joe. So I put together, working with our, uh, Director of Equalizations Department, we, I put together some rough market evidence so that hopefully that can, uh, help the commissioners make a decision on where we wanna go in the future relative to the lamplighter property. Beijing Committee, that's a good group of people. I like it, but we haven't seen each other probably for six months. And, uh, this Thursday, we're gonna meet at the Menelusion Center at 10 o'clock. So, anxious to see some faces. And I'll wear, of course, we're gonna wear our mask. But, uh, I'll give a report in two weeks on how that goes.
Thank you. Um, so Fire Service Board, I wasn't able to make it. Um, and, um, I talked to Jerome and before I, um, wasn't going to go, we were visiting on some of our budget issues. So, um, Fire Service Board is doing well. MPO didn't end up making that, but I did read through the report. Uh, they are doing the Sixth Street Study. Um, I do have the, uh, booklet here for anybody who would like to see what they are doing. Um, and then also I liked what they had for their goals, um, for the coming year. And this year was to complete US 16 corridor intersection study, which is, um, good for Pennington County. Complete an update to the transit development plan. Complete an S, uh, South Dakota 79 Campbell Street Rapid City P and E Structure Bicycle and Pedestrian Study. I think that, um, is gonna be pretty awesome. That's been going on since city council. If I, when we were on there, what, 10 years ago, Lloyd? So they've been trying to get that through and I think that'll be pretty positive for Rapid City and Pennington County. Um, Mead County's doing a transportation plan like we are and then complete the I-90 Exit 63 interchange study. Those are those goals for this year. And a lot of that has to do with Pennington County. So, uh, I believe, uh, that would be something for us to look into or any other projects that we want to move forward in the future for, uh, MPO. So, that's all I got. Commissioner Drews?
Well, for the two that I was scheduled to attend, both were postponed. So I have no reports.
We're having a great meeting thing. Lloyd, LaCroy?
So Deb, just clarification on this. On the committee reports, scheduled meetings, we should just report on just those and then on, right above it, on commission members are all, are all?
I would do it. I think when I was reading through it, because then I said, why do we have both?
Yeah.
Items from the chair would be stuff that maybe the chair goes to or wants to share information that they went to for committees. And then commission members, maybe something that's important to the commission from not outside of, and that makes sense, not outside or outside of the, um, scheduled ones.
Our assigned meeting. Okay.
Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll follow that next meeting.
You're good.
I just wanted clarification because I forgot. Um, I attended, as far as to schedule one, the planning commission meeting. Um, it went really quick. I mean, we were, I think we were in and out in, in about 25 minutes, which is good because I had another meeting right after that. But, and, and I want to thank Joe and, and, and Ron. One, at the end of the discussion during, uh, after the planning commission meeting, there were some concerns brought up on, uh, Old Hill City Road. And since I own property on it up, you know, I, I feel it's a conflict for me to say anything, but I'm just passing on the comments of, uh, to the planning commission's, uh, concerns. And, and I was able to do that privately. But they wanted to know what kind of plans there was for Old Hill City Road, uh, for future, with the future, future expansion, uh, that's going on out there, some subdividing. They had concerns. Uh, they just wanted to know what the plan is. And so I discussed that with Ron and Joe. Joe, I'll get with him and, and we'll get that. Joe will respond to those planning commissioners, what's going on with that. So, I just wanted to pass that on. On the side part, the other unscheduled ones, I did, uh, the memorial walk, uh, for the boarding school and the groundbreaking up behind West Middle Schools. That went pretty well. There was a good turnout and it ended up being quite, quite a long event. Um, along the, and I woke with, uh, went there at the request of the U-City Council because they, they were there too. And they collected money and, and turned that over, uh, to help for the new memorial. new memorial. Also attended the Youth City Council last week also. And just to give you guys a heads up, Deb will appreciate this. On their agenda was the hen ordinance, the chicken ordinance, I should say. So they're, they're discussing it too. So.
Chicken's been around a long time.
Yeah. And for those who are doing this and going through this, and I think we are going through that ordinance, it's a challenge because there's a lot of different views on it. And Deb and I, I don't know how many hours we went through, let's not both sides, 10 years ago. But I mean, that just goes to show that there's, it's still out there.
Yep. So a couple of things on yours, Lloyd. The future development came up because we were talking on the Planning Commission and I think, I don't know if Drews and Ross Connect and DeSanto can say this, I think it's been going on for a while. What is happening in Pennington County and future developments? We're getting some huge developments, but our roads, how are they impacted? How's our sewer? And I'll keep saying, and how our water is impacted from that? Because if Hill City Road is going to, Old City, Old Hill City Road is going to get some huge developments on it, is that road going to be able to sustain what we are approving? And is our water sources in our, in our sewers? And that's not just Old City Road, Old Hill City Road. That'd be any road in the county.
And thank you. I mean, they're looking out for the future. They're seeing some things changing. And we have to, and we, that's why I brought it up, the TIF.
Yep.
When we're doing TIFs, we need to take a look at that. And that's why I suggest send them to the Highway Department for their input because it's easy to overlook that. Although we don't have much authority over what happens, but we do have some type of say that we can pass on. But I mean, you're absolutely right. And that's what the Planning Commission's, their exact concerns were. They see things are, it may be kind of slow now, but they're looking out for the 10, 20-year down the road is their concern. So.
And maybe some of those TIFs can affect by doing water towers or sewer systems or road systems that we can use some of that money from the TIFs or work with the developer, developers in order to get some of that. Because we did, like I said, with the city, we did that through Red Rocks. We did it through the west or the, it'd be the west side of Haynes, but it'd be north side of Rapid City. And same with Elkvale Road. So Cabela's paid us money to put that low-level reservoir. That was part of the TIF in order to give them anything. So we got a lot of infrastructure in Elkvale Road out of that TIF from Cabela's, which a lot of people didn't know, which would have cost us more than $2 million that we had gave up. But, and then you are right. When they had the meeting at City Council, they were talking the native people through the new Susan area. They were talking about the land exchange. They were talking about Children's Memorial and the Native Indians. That was more about, back in the day, government and LaCroy put it under Native Indians because it was a federal designation. I've talked to a lady since then. That's what you had to put on there. It sounds offensive today, but that's what you had to put legally in order to get that land to be used for Native Americans for development or housing units. So that's what they're looking at in the future there. And it's, it's a good discussion.
It is. And one of the other things I attended was, I'll pass that on, is the meeting with Dusty Johnson and Nipia at Susan and did the tours, who said, and show them what, what's going on. So I attended that along with the closing on the county property, which was, was pretty cool. And they are raring to go. They're getting IT people going. And they were really excited and appreciative of Pendleton County Commission for, and the residents for, for seeing the vision and, and for what, what we did. And they expressed that. So I just wanted to pass that on to the commission that they were very appreciative of the work.
Thank you.
And the staff, Mike Cool and all that.
Thank you. Next, we will have approval of the vouchers and that would be the, with the addition of the 20,000, 10192 for the third unemployment, third quarter unemployment. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Drews, second by Ross. Any discussion? Not? Row call, please.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Ross Connect.
Aye.
Haddcock.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we are into items from planning and zoning. Board of Adjustment, we need to go into Board of Adjustment.
And go into Board of Adjustment.
Motion by Drews.
Second.
Second by LaCroy. Can we have a row call, please, Ms. Kara?
DeSanto.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Ross Connect.
Aye.
Haddcock.
Aye. Motion carries. Ms. Brittany.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. Item A is variance VA 20-09 to reduce the minimum required side yard setback from eight feet to zero feet in a suburban residential district. As the property stands today, it is zoned suburban residential district. It consists of .26 acres. It contains a single-family residence built in 1979 and a 12-by-24 lean-to built in 1999. This lean-to was attached to the existing garage on the single-family residence and is, and is the structure encroaching into the setback. A building permit was obtained for this addition. However, an incorrect lot line location was used to determine the setback. The building permit number was 1999 COBP 674. There is also an eight-and-a-half-by-12 shed on the subject property. The criteria for a variance, and there's the criteria, and I will read the responses. As staff has verified, there are no particular conditions such as topography which warrant approval of variance VA 20-09. This setback variance would not grant to use, which is otherwise excluded from property zoned suburban residential district. Strict application of the zoning ordinance would require the applicant to meet or exceed the eight-foot side yard setback requirement. Granting this setback variance may be contrary to the public interest as staff has received complaints on this structure. Granting this setback variance would allow a zero-foot setback in a suburban residential district, which is not in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. This was rounded around through the interdepartmental review. There was a couple of comments. The Highway Department is typically against the reduction of any easement or setback. However, drainage should not be significantly impacted. So in this instance, the Highway Department would not oppose. In the county ordinance enforcement, this is currently a violation with the county through a complaint by a neighbor that owns the land next to the applicant. This variance would clear the violation. This also had to go in front of the city of Rapid City to vacate a minor drainage and utility easement, which was completed on August 12, 2020. The applicant did apply for this variance in order to reduce this setback once that vacation of the easement was completed through the city. So if the Board of Adjustment chooses to approve variance VA 20-09, then staff recommends one condition be included.
Do we have a motion or discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross.
Brittany, can you put the photo up with the addition?
That whole lot is full of a...
Just, there's one photograph. Oh, I wanted to see the photograph on this.
Fence. Oh, okay. That one.
Right there. So the addition was built in 1999.
Correct.
What they built in permit, when was the fence built?
Um, I am not sure when the fence was built. I do know with a building permit application, I believe that they had thought that where that flagpole area is platted, I believe that they thought that that was an easement at the time. And so if you look at the building permit application, it looks like the setback was to that far lot line. Because that used to be property that was owned by the public and there was some access that went up to auction and the neighboring property owner purchased it and then planted it into their lot.
So the applicant owns the fence?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. What was the nature of the complaint?
That that property or that lean-to was encroaching on that lot line.
The only thing, I was talking to Commissioner Drews earlier today, and if we decide to grant that variance, I would suggest that in the future, we might consider something similar to this, that we agree to do that with the current owner of the property. If the property changes ownership in the future, that the new owner would come in and go through the same process. Because once that's granted, it goes into, it's perpetual. It just, you know. So that's just a suggestion, but I don't have a problem with this for the day.
Madam Chair.
Thanks, LaCroy.
I, I too, I struggled with this. You know, when I, when I see the eve hanging over the property line, I'm going like, no, because I'm dealing with another property. This is similar to something along those lines. They built right up to the property. I think this one's way different. I think they, they went about it the way they should have. They got the building permit, but there was some mistakes that happened. And so that, I'm understanding on this one. But I, it, and then thanks for the information on the history because of that was, used to be city or county prior than then they bought it. And then things have changed after the fact, I think. But yeah, that, that was one of my biggest concerns is having that, that overhang over on, on that fence. And that's why the next property owner would have the problem. Because I think it's going to continue. I wouldn't approve it otherwise without knowing this history.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Just encourage you guys, look at your rapid map and see how many are encroaching or are right up to the setback in this area through 4626. I mean, look at these areas here. And most of these houses are something in the lots are encroaching or have zero-degree setbacks. So if we're going to start changing the rules, I think if you look at just from this simple map here with not that, you know, just a short or small area, there's a lot of houses or stuff that's in the zero-degree setbacks. So unless we're going to change rules or, every variance is different, but I'm just saying, I don't know if it's because the lots need to be bigger and we're letting people build bigger houses. And it also, when we do that, it affects the roads, sewer, the water, all that kind of stuff. So in the future, if it's not in areas that already don't have it, maybe we need to start thinking about that because they turn into developments like this and we already increased or started a precedence on zero-degree setback in this area. So it might not have been this commission, but it's hard to say no when most of the areas have the same thing in the general vicinity. Commissioner DeSanto, please.
I agree with both you and Lloyd. I, Deb, I was looking at this and it looks to me like there's a lot of these situations in the one small area. Normally, you guys know that I don't approve zero setbacks at all. But, and especially this one seems a little bit more offensive just because of that eve overhanging. Brittany, can you tell me if they've got gutters on that that are directing the water back into their own property or if it's flowing on? It doesn't look like they have gutters.
If you do look at the photo, it does look like they do have, their gutters are going out underneath the fence.
Oh, I see. Yeah. Okay. Okay. Anyway, I, I would respect the neighbor that's complaining if they're winding up with a bunch of water creating an impact in their backyard. But at this point in time, I'll go ahead and accept this variance. But like Deb said, mostly because it looks like this entire neighborhood is full of these types of situations.
Just food for thought as well. You guys, you cannot drain your water onto somebody else's land legally. So they have to redirect those spouts and the gutter and anything else. So if the, the water is coming off your building onto somebody else's yard, you have to either get gutters that take that water off. And the other thing is you can't direct that water towards your fence that it's going to be affecting and going underneath and affecting your, your neighbors. So they do have legal rights if that is happening. And we know that just from Brittany's last few things that we have dealt with. So if you are having drainage, I will approve the, for me personally, I would approve the variance. But I would say for Dwayne or somebody to go out and help with the drainage area that needs to be draining on their own land and not somebody else's. So.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
Can we approve this variance with that requirement?
I think it's supposed to, it's law, isn't it, Brittany?
And I believe that that has been brought up and our ordinance enforcement has been working with Mr. Krantz on that. I can't speak directly to it. Dwayne is in the audience if there are specific questions to that.
Dwayne, would you like to come up? I think because that's crucial for this variance to go through is for that person to understand, number one, it's the law. Number two, I could see where the neighbor has some issues with that.
Right. Good morning, Board.
Sir.
So I am working with the Krantz's on this and that was part of, we were getting the variance through and seeing if that does, if you guys were to approve that, and we're going to redirect that spout.
Okay.
To where it's different than going through under the fence.
And his, the spout going to his fence and then the water coming over the top and dropping on the guys.
It's going right to the edge of that fence, so it does run underneath.
Both of them are?
I know the first one does. I'm not 100% sure on the second one.
See the ledge of that?
Yes, ma'am.
LaCroy brought it up, that ledge. Does that have a gutter that brings that down into that fence? Or does that, that just have a, basically a eve on it that's dropping off the roof into his yard, the other guy's yard?
Believe that has just the eve on it. I'm not 100% sure on that, though.
So maybe we should say to the effect, if he wants to have this variance, he needs to take that drainage off that and put a gutter there and drain it off onto his own land.
Yes, ma'am. I can work with him on that.
Does anybody have a?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
The question I have is relative to the complaint. I understand if we do the variance, it erases the complaint. But what is the complaint?
The complaint was that the, that structure sits on the property line was the complaint that I received on it.
For me, you're not going to get rid of that complaint, but maybe you could help the, Mr. Drews with what we're talking about on people's drainage, water, sewer, different things that we are, we can make a difference on. I just think it's crazy that that spout is going right to the property line and that there's no gutter on there. So if I have a lot of water going on my property, it's affecting, if I have a basement or anything else in my backyard. So I think it's just good etiquette, plus it's the law. You cannot drain your drainage on somebody else's property or to it so it drains onto there. So.
Madam Chair, I totally agree. I, I would not approve this, but the history, it's, the person did not do this intentionally. They went through the proper channels. It's not like they bypassed anything. And there were some very, because I wouldn't support this otherwise, quite frankly, just because for the fact, we had this on some property up on Sheridan Lake Road where the overhang was on property. And we had big discussion on, on the drainage and so forth. I think the circumstances of this property, I'm okay with what happened because it's not, it wasn't intentional. They followed the rules. It was just that some land changed hands. And once that got done, I believe, then it became that way. Or some, also with the surveying was off too, but there was more than one reason. But I don't know if, you know, Dwayne, if you're going to work with them on those issues, you know, this one's, I'm okay with approving the variance.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
You know, if this overhang was on a different part of law, seven revised, where they have a visual impact on, you know, a home on that lot, that might be a different situation. But it's in the flagpole portion of the lot, which is just primarily used for access. So I would say any negativity is pretty minimal relative to the impact viewer property value.
That would be correct.
So can we make a condition that, bottom line is the law anyway, when we, if we grant the variance, that the, he needs to work on the drainage coming to his property and not any others?
Just might not work with them on that to make sure that happens.
But we don't have to make a condition. It's just the law and you're having him comply.
I'm good with that, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. All right. Any other discussion? Do we have a motion? Not yet.
Move to approve.
Moved by Ross Connect. I'll second for discussion. Do we have any other discussion? All right. Ms. Kara?
DeSanto.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hattcock?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Dwayne.
Thank you.
Item B, variance to West River Solar.
Call McNeese with the State Attorney's Office. Did you want to open it up for comment before we approve it, or no?
We usually do call him. We usually let him do his spiel, and then we open up for comment after that.
Oh, I meant on the variance, the first one.
Oh.
I apologize.
If anybody was here, if they wanted to comment.
We didn't get any speaker requests, so did someone want to speak on that? Because usually you fill out a speaker request, sir.
Must not have been.
Gentleman in the back right there.
Okay, sir, sorry.
No, it's okay. I haven't had my coffee today.
There you go. Sir, if you'd like to come up and state your name. Usually when you, and I should have said it again, and I apologize, you have to fill out a speaker request form, then we know you want to speak on an item.
Sorry, my first time here, so.
Nope.
I'm Dan Lewis. We're the neighbor to the east of this property, and we got a notice of a variance. And then just the other day, excuse me, we got a notice for a solar, whatever they want to call it, solar energy system. Our concern is our neighbor, we got a couple, I don't think we're against the project. We got variance before we even knew about it, and we have some concerns with zero setbacks as a neighbor in our section line and drainage issues. Until we know more about it, this is all we really have, is this notice right here. So I'm here to, as the only neighbor that is probably going to affect, because I'm to the east and saying, I don't really know a lot more about it, but I, when you start requesting variances for zero setbacks and all that, my little red flag's going pretty fast. So, but I'm not against a solar project. You know, it's just, we got this, and then you get that we're getting a solar deal. I think they got the cart ahead of the horse, and if they're going zero setbacks, maybe they're trying to shove too much into ground they need more ground for.
Are you on item A or item B?
I'm on B, the West River Solar.
Okay, so I didn't miss you. I was thinking I missed you, and I apologize. Okay.
Is that, am I at the right time? I didn't fill out a form or anything.
Nope, you did, right. I just.
So our concern is, I just, we need to know more about it, and we, I'm against a setback or zero deal right now, because we don't know much about it. I don't know what's going to happen on our section line, our drainage, all this as a neighbor to the, you know, if somebody wants to put in a solar project, I'm not against that, but I want to make sure it's done properly.
I think you come to the right place to get some more information, because you're going to see the presentation.
That's exactly what I was going to say, sir. So if you want to speak after the presentation, because they're going to give a presentation of what this is all about, and then you still have questions, you can come up, and I'll call you to come up again, sir.
Okay. I'm not sure I know the whole process, and I apologize for not filling out the form, but it just, it's a neighbor, and we just got this request, and it says show up at 10:30, so I did.
Your name again?
Dan Lewis.
Dan Lewis.
Grandview Land.
So, Dan Lewis, what'll happen, I thought you were on item A, and I missed you. So we're on item B, and that's what you want to talk on. So what we'll do is exactly what Lloyd said. We always do a presentation. I was going to tell you that if you don't know about something, and then they'll do the presentation, then you'll come up and say, okay, I got this, I understand now, or I got a few more questions. So I'll call you after the presentation.
Thank you, sir, for the confusion. Thank you.
Nope, you're not, you did nothing wrong. Okay.
Morning Commissioners. Jason Thinnison, County Planner. Agenda item B is variance 20-10. The applicant is West River Solar LLC. The agent is Ross Verba. The property owner is Hollis Arlen. Site location is south of the intersection of Highway 44 and Airport Road. The applicant's agent, Ross Verba, is requesting to reduce the minimum required rear yard setback from 25 feet to zero feet in a general agriculture district. The applicant has applied for a conditional use permit in order to allow a utility scale solar energy system on the subject property and adjacent property, and this will be heard at next week's Planning Commission meeting. As it sits today, the property is zone general agriculture district consisting of 160 acres. Vacant of any structures or utilities. There's no special flood hazard area on the property. And access, legal access is provided via unimproved section line along the eastern portion of the property. There are four criteria the Board needs to consider before approving a variance. They are on the screen, and I will read staff's responses to each one of those, starting with number one. Staff has verified there are no particular conditions such as topography which warrant approval of this variance. Number two, the setback variance would not grant to use, which is otherwise excluded from property zone general agriculture district. Number three, strict application of the zoning ordinance will require the applicant to meet or exceed the 25-foot setback. And lastly, number four, granting this setback variance does not appear to be contrary to the public interest. Staff, obviously, we just had somebody come up and speak on it, but we have not received any calls or letters to complain. And also, granting this setback variance would allow a zero-foot setback in a general agriculture district, which is not in harmony with the general purpose or intent of the zoning ordinance. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review in County Highway did state that they're typically against reducing setbacks. However, for this situation, they would not oppose their request. So as I mentioned, the applicant did apply for a conditional use permit in order to build a utility scale solar energy system on the subject property and the adjacent property. You can see up here on the map of the screen, this is the subject property, and one phase of the solar array panels is going to cross the property line. This is just due to the buildable area on the property. You can see down here, the southeast's got special flood hazard area that he's trying to stay out of. And therefore, if you look back, this is the portion of the property that he's looking to vacate or have a variance for the 25-foot setback. So he'll build right up to that property line and then maintain the 25-foot setback along this southern portion.
The 25-foot setback, Jason, is on the, on this?
It's on this property here, above.
He owns the top and the bottom of the property?
So Hollis Arlen owns both of these properties.
Okay. And then why can't he pull it away from the other people's property not to have a variance?
Well, Hollis Arlen owns both these properties, ma'am. Both of these in question.
Right.
And he wants to build that solar array, so it straddles the property line. Due to the topography, this is kind of a sloping hill with drainage that comes down into the special flood hazard area. So he wants to build this way to the property line and have that zero feet, but he says he can maintain the 25 feet on this property.
The zero feet is on the property line to the right?
To the north, where the green is up top.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
I believe what we're looking at is he's asking for a variance, but the variance is, affects only his property, because he owns both pieces of property.
Correct.
It's obviously a different taxable piece of property, but there's a property line there. He owns both sides of the property line, so I don't see an issue here.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Okay, so the north part of the variance, is that a platted lot, or is it just a quarter-quarter?
They're legally described.
What's that?
They're eloquently described. They're not subdivided.
Not subdivided.
So it's not platted?
No, it's not.
So there's really not a property line, is there? I mean, it's self-identified property, but there is no platted property line per se, is there?
Not platted, but eloquently described. So these are two separate pieces of property.
I kind of agree with Mark, you know, it's, if he owns both pieces, I would think that if he's going to do, they're going to do anything detrimental, that he would eventually pay the consequences and not, not any neighbors, if no neighbors directly impacted.
Madam Chair.
Unless I'm missing something.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Go ahead.
I get, that's what I thought when I was looking through this, too. Both properties are his, so he's, he's asking for the variance for his own property, but he's maintaining the setbacks on the rest of the other, or on the property, his property, if I'm correct. The rest of it to the other property owners, as Dan was just up here talking about, he's still going to maintain his setbacks.
Correct.
From his, from Dan's property and other people's properties.
Right.
It's just on the zone.
Right. So this is the, this is the site plan that Mr. Verba had submitted along with his conditional use permit application. And you can see the setbacks from the section line here, 125 feet, and then from the southern section line, it's 172, almost 173 feet. So I don't think it's going to affect any other adjacent property owners.
Well, that's the section line, Jason, is what you're talking about.
Right. So this north-south section line here, and then there's an east and west section line here, and he's required 58 feet, and he's got more than that.
So why did he have to get a variance if it's his property?
It's this property line here, because in the event that he ever sells that property?
Right.
Then he'd be in violation of the setbacks. And if he has a variance to it, then he won't be.
Okay. Now, Mr. Lewis, would you like to come back up? Dan, would you like to come back up?
Does that answer his question?
Let's see if that, did that answer, you could come up, sir. That way you can, are you understanding what they're doing now?
Yes. This is the first they've seen it, so. We just got the notice, and we were concerned, and as long as we got the setback, if he wants to do whatever on his own property, I have no problem with that. We just, I've never seen this before. So I don't know where the process or what this comes out to, how we're supposed to be as neighbors addressed, or no part of this to see what we're doing. I don't know the process, I guess. It's ag land, so somebody's development, so I don't know. You said this has been going on for how long?
This is the first anybody's seen of this, other than staff, since he applied for it.
Process is, when you get that variance, there's usually a phone number you call. You call them, and you say, can you show me what this variance is about? That's how it starts the process, and then you see the variance. Jason is in charge of this one, and you say, well, Jason, can you show me what this is all about? And then Jason shows you, and he'll say, well, if you have a complaint, because Jason will walk you through the process then, once you're in planning, and say, sir, Mr. Lewis, if you need to come and you have a complaint about this, then come to the commission, fill out a speaker request, and speak on this item. Or you can get on audio, too, and do it that way. So that's our process.
And Madam Chair.
That doesn't say that in this letter I got.
It doesn't?
It doesn't say to call you. It says to show up at this meeting at 10:30. So that's why I'm here. So I don't mean to.
Nope, you're okay, so maybe.
But I'm learning, and I'm getting part of this, so we're, you know, we just want to be informed of what we're doing as our, as our property and make sure it's done properly. And when you get a somebody for a request for a variance right off the bat, that sets off our concern.
Think they're taking some of your land.
Seeing part of this, I don't see any real issues, and I think the county's trying to look after that. And again, I'm not against the project, but I just want to be informed of, as a neighbor, you know, this could be a major project.
So there's no phone number or anything to call on that variance? Jason, we don't have our phone number to call?
Up here on the top.
Yeah.
Can I bring it to you and let you read it?
But it should, I see what he's saying. If you have questions, should say.
Your phone number's up on top, but it just says show up.
That might be something.
So maybe if we, in the future, if you have any questions, please call us or whatever.
Sure. And then I had, I had this plain map.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Here, trying to just, I'm not trying to create issues for you, I'm just trying to find out what's going to affect our property.
Showing us that, some of our process.
Would other property owners have received that same thing, or did this only impact, Mr. Lewis?
If they're adjacent property owners, especially in this area, there would be so few of them, because it's so remote.
The only thing that could, kept me addressed.
Sure.
To the north, this, this section line actually comes straight south of Airport Road, and you've got a bridge there that the county put in, and then it dead-ends. So I think stromers or somebody's got, they're going to have to do something to get that. What, what happens for the section line to get access, to get in there?
That was my question. Does it, did it affect the section line, Jason?
So we're actually going to address all that in the conditional use permit.
Okay.
So we should be back to come on this, because that's, that's going to, that's affecting me more, the setback, if it's between his own ground, I don't have.
Okay, so Mr. Lewis, bottom line is, after this, Jason can give you his phone number and tell you the future process of how this works.
We'd be very encouraged for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you very much. Sorry for the issues or conflict, but I just didn't, never been through the process and didn't know.
You're good, sir. Commissioner LaCroy.
I, I think where some of the confusion came in on this was, you know, they're applying for this variance, and then they're coming forward on the conditional use permit. Normally, you would have came to the Planning Commission and probably got more informed. I think the applicant's probably, in order to be prepared for the planning, they knew they had to do this first, and so that, that kind of throws things out of, usually they come to our Planning Commission, and we work out on this. Am I correct, Jason?
Right. So this is kind of backwards?
Yeah, it's kind of backwards, so.
All right.
But I think you're, you're on the right track, and, and really appreciate your understanding, because now we know we need to address some of these notices that maybe we should say, please contact, and who's in charge of that, so you can get a little information, so we're not taking time out of your day.
Are we missing something here, Jason?
Sorry to take all your time, but thank you, we're just.
Thank you for making the trip here, sir.
Are we missing anything on this, Lewis, or Louis?
No, ma'am. With all that, Board of Adjustment approves, chooses to approve variance 20-10. Staff recommends three conditions be included.
Okay, but you understand maybe on the questions and things that we change our process a little bit, so.
Yes, ma'am. Yep, I took notes.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion on here?
Move to approve.
Moved by Ross Connect.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. Roll call.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hattcock?
Aye. Motion carries. Brittany, were you listening to some of that on maybe putting the phone number just on the top, and if you have any questions, please, please call whoever's like doing that part at the time, so they can visit with them or come in and meet with them?
Yes, I will talk to Jerry about adding that to the notification letters.
Thank you. Next, we need to close the Board of Adjustment.
So move.
Motion by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by Drews. Roll call, please.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hattcock?
Aye. Motion carries. Ms. Brittany, please, consent agenda.
The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote by the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following two items. Item C is Plan Unit Development Review PU 1901 for Brink Constructors, BCI Properties LLC, Zane Brink as the agent, and approval is recommended. Item number D is Minor Plat MPL 20-29 for James and Marilyn Dean, and approval is recommended.
Thank you, Ms. Brittany. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on item C and D on the consent agenda? If not, is there anybody from the Commission who would like to pull item C and D from the consent agenda? If not, motion, please.
Move to approve.
Moved by Ross Connect?
Second.
Second by LaCroy. Roll call, Ms. Kira.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Roskinek.
Aye.
Hadcock.
Aye, motion carries. Next, regular agenda, item E, please.
Uh, good morning, Cody Stack, environmental planner. Item E is Rezone twenty-dash-zero-five. It's to rezone two-hundred-and-forty acres from Plan Unit Development District to a general agriculture district. Uh, the applicant is CMR LLC. Current zoning is a plan unit development. Uh, it was approved in two thousand and eight as, uh, basically as a future subdivision. It is dividing the property into one-point-seven-five acre lots, having single-family residences on the property. Um, this was routed around through the interdepartmental review and there's no major concerns back. Uh, the reason for the rezone is the current owners are selling the lot to a pollen verging, um, gavic, which that's actually gone through the deeds, been filed, that register of deeds. And they have no desire to develop the land to that plan unit development. Um, they just want to put a single-family residence on, on the lot. A comprehensive plan's not required, um, future zoning, um, through the, um, comprehensive plan amendment shows it can be ag. It presents in harmony with surrounding zoning, so staff's recommending approval.
We have a motion or discussion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskinek.
This two-hundred-and-forty acres lies about four or five miles south of Deerfield and some of them are remotest area, the Black Hills, that I can imagine, so I think it's just, uh, great that we get the opportunity to take it from a plan unit development, put it in agriculture.
Yes, absolutely.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. Any other discussion? Cody, did we miss anything?
I do not believe so.
Okay, roll call, please.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Roskinek.
Aye.
Hadcock.
Aye, motion carries. Item F, and we have three people on audio after the presentation, Jason.
Morning, Gink, Commissioners, Jason Thunison County Planner. Agenda item F is Vacation of Easement twenty-dash-zero-two. The applicant is David Grover. He is in the audience if you have any questions for him. Surveyor is Britain Engineering. The applicant has requested to vacate and relocate a sixty-six-foot-wide existing private access easement to provide access for future development. It's kind of a busy slide, I apologize upfront. Um, this easement, as it sits today, does cross three separate properties. They're all zoned, general agriculture district, all take access off of Old Hill City Road. Uh, also contain a thirty-three-foot-wide private access easement on the western property lines as well as a sixty-six-foot-wide private access easement highlighted in purple on the screen up there. Uh, Lot A is the first one to the north and red is vacant of any structures consisting of one-point-six-two acres. Lot B is also vacant of any structures consisting of point-nine-seven acre. And Lot C is sixty-seven-point-two-five acres, contains a single-family residence built in nineteen oh nine as long, as well as seven outbuildings. The request was sent to the register, uh, sent out for interdepartmental review and the register of deeds. Did have a comment on that saying the right-of-way change is okay with them, the right-of-way dedication and vacation of previous right-of-way need to happen in two separate documents, meaning that we can't vacate it today and relocate it today. Uh, just the staff's analysis of the request, the Board of Commissioners on October sixth, twenty-twenty, approved layout plan twenty-dash-twenty-four, twenty-dash-twenty-four to combine the subject properties and subdivide in orders, create lots A through L of Mills Ranch subdivision. The relocation of this right-of-way will provide a means of legal access to the proposed lots. And register of deeds comments have been included as a condition of approval. And with that, staff recommends approval of Vacation of Easement VE twenty-dash-zero-two with that condition.
Okay, let's hear from the applicant first and then the, is the applicant Joan on the audio, is it, or is it the?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the applicant, would you like to come up and do, kind of tell us what you're doing, sir?
Hi, my name's David Grover and I'm vacating the existing one because that was put in many, many years ago. The road was never, ever put in. It just was, it just was established and registered. And now that I'm, uh, going to develop the property, I'm putting, uh, just moving it to the south a little bit. I already have, uh, I've talked with, uh, um, Mark at the Highway Department and where the new location is for it to come out on Old Hill City Road has a lot better view of eyesight from any direction. So he's, uh, he's actually given me approval of, uh, access from highway, uh, from the Old Hill City Road there.
So, Mr. Grover, is the easement all on your property and the new road all on your property?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's no, no development on it at this time, other than just the old homestead from nineteen oh nine or whenever it was.
And the easement was given to other properties surrounding it?
Yeah, well, to the, basically to the west of, of the property.
Okay.
And that, and they'll still have it because the road will hit the, uh, the Towering Pines Road, which then gives them, uh, yeah, they have the, all the properties to the west will have, uh, ease, uh, access on this road.
So when you give somebody a easement and you file it with the register of deeds, which, is it filed with the register of deeds? Is, right?
Madam Chair.
Hold on just a sec, Commissioner. When we got a easement from our property for our property that we had, the people after we moved said, I want it back. Well, in our case, we couldn't give it back because we wouldn't have had enough parking for that property or no one could park in our building because we needed that easement in order to get that many parking spates or even to have somebody be able to, uh, run a business there. So we couldn't give them back the easement. I'm asking you those questions just in case somebody's using that easement then agreed, I didn't know legally and maybe Colin knows, that, um, if you gave somebody easement and they signed those papers with you, meaning if Deb and me and you made an agreement and you gave me an easement, I didn't think you could just legally come in and say, okay, Commissioner, I want this back. I thought the landowners, if they had signed with you, needed to, uh, agree with that as well, which I don't know if anybody else is on that easement paper.
Well, there really isn't, I guess. And what my, my plans is, is this, and I've already, uh, gone through the steps of the layout plan and, and I'll be filing for the preliminary plat by tomorrow. And, uh, that's to put twelve, uh, minimum of five-acre residences on here.
Yes, sir.
And each, each lot that borders this property or road will have, you know, they, they have the easement to it plus any, the guys further to the west will, will just, that will just continue through.
Yes, sir, Mr. Grover. Did you look at the easement by chance?
Madam Chair, easements generally run with the land. So if you sell the property, the easement should still be there and I believe they're filed with the register of deeds so then anybody can figure out where they are, just like with plats and whatnot. So it should be filed with register of deeds and run with the land.
But if the other people signed, he gave an easement and they signed the paper with the easement and now he wants to vacate that easement and those people's names are on that easement, I don't think you can just vacate it and say, just because it's my land, because you gave somebody an easement. Basically, you gave them part of your land, did you?
Madam Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Roskinek.
Easement is recorded. It's recorded at the register of deeds on that plat that we're looking at. Right there, it says it's a sixty-six foot, there is probably no documentation or miscellaneous document that's going to, uh, explain the details of easement. The easement is simply, uh, displayed or depicted on this plat that we're looking at, recorded. I'm not sure what book and page, but that is the sixty-six, sixty-six-foot easement. If I recall, that was the Mills Ranch. And so that easement, I'm guessing, uh, when they did that, they wanted to provide, provide access to the property to the west, which I don't know who owns that.
Yeah. And, and Madam Chair, that, the easement that he's talking about is, is with that land and, and I, I understand, I, actually what I was applying for was a relocation because it was to the north of it and I'm just putting it down into the middle of the property. So I was applying for relocate, but according to register of deeds, it has to be two separate things, like you're saying, it has to be vacated first, which is why it's in front of you. But immediately at that same time, we're going to apply for, uh, relocation for it.
So you understand where I'm going. So he can, he wants to vacate something that somebody else legally signed for him to give an easement to and it's recorded at the register of deeds. You can't just do that as a landowner. You have to have the agreement of those people that you gave that easement to that they wanted, they're okay with it. If I'm correct, because basically that easement, it's yours in one sense, but once you did that easement so they could get across their property, you can't just say, okay, I'm vacating that now, find a different way or I'm going to relocate it and you just go with me.
Madam Chair, I think, I understand what you're saying. You're saying that Lot C, whoever owns that, has a property interest in the easement and that to vacate the easement, they have to agree or, uh, somehow there has to be a procedure by which the vacation, where they get notice and they have the opportunity to be heard.
Well, based on the easement, Colin, based on the easement, who's on the easement? So if it's just, just you and none, none of the landowners that you put on there that said, Mr. Grover is giving, um, an easement to Deb Hadcock and Deb Hadcock so she can get across her land, blah, blah, blah. If it, if it doesn't say that, you're fine. But if it says something that you're giving an easement to Lot C, uh, for access, I don't think you legally can just take that away without, because basically you just gave somebody part of your land.
Maybe, maybe I can shed some light on this because I drove, I drive it and I've seen kind of what's going on. Uh, confirm for me if you could. So you bought this ranch.
Yeah.
And this existing easement was already set many years ago for access to the property, but it was never utilized. It was there. Am I correct?
Yes.
So there's no road, nothing with, and the guy owns both the properties, the whole ranch. Now he's come along, he's bought the ranch and he's subdividing it out and he wants to put a road in, but he wants to move the easement from, actually, if I, if I'm correct, that part, the existing one, easement's further up the hill as you're going.
Yes.
And so he wants to move it down further off the hill and put the road in. So there's actually no work done, nothing, no houses, except for the existing nineteen oh five down at the bottom of the hill because it was a, a big ranch. So, you know, I get where you're going, Deb, but this was just a two-hundred and, how many acres was this?
It was, it was sixty-nine total acres.
Sixty-nine acres.
But all I'm doing is relocating the existing sixty-six-foot wide hill with no, no buildings on it at all.
Okay, so let's, let's talk to the people on the audio, Joan, and those three are, what's their names, Joan? Jackie. Okay, is Ms. Jackie on the line, Joan? Okay, Ms. Jackie, have you been listening to our conversation?
Yes, I have.
Okay, and your comments, ma'am?
First of all, so you know who we are. Um, myself and my brother and sister are co-partners in the Ford Mountain Ranch, which is directly next to the Mills Ranch. Our concern is that several of the plots that Buzz is planning to, um, build houses or, you know, sell and have people build houses on have our, our Towering Pines Lane as their access, as their, how they're going to get to and from their home. Towering Pine Lanes is, is a mutual easement lane between us and the Mills family. Right now, only Bob Drew, who is the one, he's on the other side of the fence from, um, what Buzz is planning to develop. And we have a mutual legal easement with him so that Towering Pine's Lane is, is not a county road. It's our, basically it's our private driveway. And we, for years it was unnamed and we just had, had to name it Towering Pine's Lane just about two or three years ago.
So, Ms. Jackie, hold on just a sec. Colin can, or, um, Jason, can you show us where Towering Pine Road is?
Yep, it's right here. It's north-south, thirty-three-foot wide.
So it's the light blue?
Yeah. Uh, correct, yeah.
And the new access, that's the easement that's up there now, is the new one or the?
This is the old one.
That's the old one. And the new one will come right in the middle, okay.
Right, two are late, yes.
Okay, sorry, Ms. Jackie, so we're all on the same page. Go ahead, Ms. Jackie.
Uh, just our concern and, you know, we want to just make sure that we are heard before this, uh, is a decision. We don't mind Buzz developing, you know, that, that area, but we do not want his road to connect with, come out onto Towering Pine's Lane. It is basically, it's a dirt road in the winter, in the springtime. It gets, you know, washed out and muddy and rocky, um, and we're not planning to improve it. We have semis coming in there, we have, we run cattle. If there's cars there, there's, the cattle are free-range cattle. They're not, they're not penned in. So it would be of, you know, it wouldn't be a good thing to have his road connecting or any of his properties having access, that, that would be their only access to and from their home.
So what is your, what is your solution, Jackie? Because the first easement and the second easement both come out on Towering Pine's Road.
Well, the first easement was never built. That road was never built. So we would have, at that point in time, we probably would have had this same discussion with then would have been the Groves family and the, the Drew family. They do have access to Old Hill City Road.
Yeah.
My sister's now coming on too, um, and she may have some comments. Judy, have you been able to hear?
Well, they're going to have to have a second access as well, even if that's not the main access, is Towering Pine Road. So Old Hill, Old Hill City Road will be the main access, but they will have to have legally a second access. You know that, Ms. Jackie, right?
I did not know that, no.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Did your sister want to speak?
Judy is muted.
Okay, so, um, we have a Commissioner-
No, she isn't. She's not muted now.
Okay, Ms. Judy, did you want to speak?
Um, yes, I have a couple of, uh, issues and concerns. Just thank you for inviting us into this, in this strange Zoom meeting format, but thank you very much.
You're welcome.
With whom am I speaking, please?
This is Commissioner Hadcock and you are be, um, we have, uh, four other commissioners besides me listening, um, to what you're saying today.
Good, and, and I don't know what my sister Jackie might have already expressed because I wasn't able to hear until just now. So I may be redundant and I apologize if that's the case. I will try to be, um, short about my comments. We acknowledge that, um, the Mills Family Partnership has sold property to Mr. Grover and he's been a longtime friend of, of our mom who has passed away, but we, we acknowledge that and we, we look forward to working cooperatively with the county and with Mr. Grover. But we do have some concerns that affect our property operations and so we just wanted to raise those, get them on the record and perhaps get some answers now or soon. One of my questions has to do with road maintenance of Towering Pine's Lane. It is a hundred-plus-year-old road and hasn't received a whole lot of lovely attention over those years. It's functional, but it's narrow and often quite muddy and, and navigable if you've got four-wheel drive. The, um, the thing is, it's not a county road. It is always been a private road. And with a very few people using it, that works. But as we increase, anticipate increased traffic by bringing in a subdivision, we need to know what the plans are and who will take responsibility for maintaining and for surfacing and grading and filling in the potholes that are inevitable, whatever. It, it can't be on us because we didn't change the situation, if that makes sense.
So, Ms. uh, Ms. Judy, I'm going to stop you for just a second. This is a vacation of an easement and it's the first part of what's called a layout plan. First you have to get the easement, then he's going to have a layout plan, then a preliminary plan.
Sure.
So there's two other steps plus a final step before this is all done. So today we are talking about the approval of a vacation of an easement so he can get that plan moving forward in order to tell you and, and for us to actually know what, what is happening on this property. So, um, but you can, um, for the road and all the areas that are coming up with this development, you can put input on that, uh, layout plan or even a preliminary plan in order to get your voice heard and make sure that road and your, um, concerns are met. Does that make sense?
It does. How, Commissioners, shall we go about giving that input? What is most helpful?
Jason, if you could tell them the process, Ms. Judy, the process, and then kind of tell them, um, what we're doing today and what happens next for this property so they have an understanding. Um, are you doing this property as well, Jason? And maybe they can contact you.
Okay, I believe Brittany is the one doing the, uh, staff report for the, uh, preliminary plat next, but the layout plan has already been heard by the board and approved earlier this month.
Okay.
So if, uh, if you have any questions, you can feel free to contact our office. But moving forward, I think Mr. Grover said he's going to apply for the preliminary plat today.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, and, uh, at that point, we'll take that in and staff will, uh, conduct more research on the property, take into account any, uh, any objections that, uh, neighboring properties have, uh, and make public notifications again, and then there will be a hearing again, uh, about a month from tomorrow.
So what is the phone number? So you contact Ms. Brittany, Ms. Judy and Ms. Jackie, and that phone number is?
Three-nine-four-two-one-eight-six.
Three-nine-four-two-one-eight-six.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. And my sister has already been in touch with Brittany Moltar and she's been helpful to us and I appreciate that and been responsive, so good on the, good on the- been responsive, so good on the, good on the department there. The vacation of the easement, then, just for my clarification for today, is there was a, an easement approved some years ago, sixty-six foot wide easement across Mills subdivision land, and we're moving it, or Mr. Grover needs to move it to accommodate his subdivision. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, good. So, um, at this point, I have heard or seen some photos that road, um, dirt work has already commenced, according to Ms. Molotar, so, um, I'm wondering if a stormwater runoff permit, um, whatever you actually call that, mitigation, stormwater treatment, I don't know what the words are, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. He has to have one of those.
Yes, and I think he's already been, you know, getting, getting a jump on the weather. He's had some bulldozers up there already, so I'm just interested if the permit process is going to follow the laying out of the road and moving of earth. And the reason I'm asking that is that in twenty fifteen, our property, which is downhill, quite a much downgrade from where Mr. Um, Grover will be developing. Our property in twenty fifteen suffered a significant flood, and as did much of the Black Hills. And it cost us an enormous amount of money to recover from that flood. We need to know as much as possible, Mother Nature being what she is, that stormwater runoff, uh, problems aren't increased by having this development uphill from us.
So, um, I- So, Ms. Judy, it's called the SWIP program, Storm Water Protection Plan? He has to have that. He has to have that. And then, we just talked about this earlier. Legally, you could not dump your drainage on somebody else's property. So he, when he does, when he does his development, he's got to make sure he maintains his stormwater, and basically that stormwater protection plan, you actually can see that, um, and you can ask for that from Brittany or Jason or whoever, um, is working on the project in order to make sure that that, uh, drainage, and not just that, the road or anything else is maintained. When you do, Jason did say they do a layout plat, and that's basically a layout plan. That's kind of what Mr. Grover wants to do. But the preliminary plat will show exactly what he's doing, and that'd be the time too, um, if not before, you'd talk to Brittany and make sure they have their SWIP plan and, and the road, um, done the way it's supposed to and, and how his development is laid out. All that will be in that preliminary plat, and that'd be the time to, to comment on any of those or send your comments in. You can send them in, or you also can, um, call us as Commissioners and kind of tell us your concerns as well before meetings.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskin. Commissioner Roskin.
Uh, and who's speaking, please?
Ms. Judy.
Judy?
Yes.
Uh, my name is Judy, Judy Lang. I am the general partner for Ford Mountain Ranch, L L L P.
Okay, so Judy, uh, this Towering Pines Road, which is basically a cattle trail, uh-
You got it.
Did I hear that there was an agreement, so it's a documented agreement between, uh, Mills and the Ford Ranch? Is that, did I hear that right? Do we got a copy of that here somewhere?
Yeah.
So that's my only concern, is, you know, Deb talked about easements, and if that easement, if, uh, if it's binding, then I'd, I'd like to see that documented.
That would be important, that be part of the record.
Yes. So, Mr. Grover, you'd like to speak?
Yeah, uh, on a couple of different things that I was hearing there, and to begin with, one of, one of the things is, is that I'm going to have twelve lots on this. There will be only one lot in the northwest corner, right across the road from, uh, Bob Drew's entrance into his property, that, uh, that'd be Lot A of my development, and that's the only lot that would be accessed off of, off of, uh, the Towering Pines. The other thing is, is that, that actually that whole Towering Pines Road is actually on my property, and, and, um, and it'll stay there. I, I'm, this new, uh, easement that I'm asking for, the, the relocation of it, was connecting to Towering Pines, and I'm still going to want to connect the two power, Towering Pines, but there will be, you know, all of the traffic is not going to go on that Towering Pines. They're going to go on my, you know, I'm going to have a sixty-six foot wide easement with a twenty-four foot wide, uh, gravel base on it. It's going to be a very nice road going in, so everybody that accesses any of the properties that I have out there will, will use this, this new road. There is an agreement, yes, that's registered, uh, with, with my property, that, uh, the, the Ford Mountain, uh, uh, limited, the partnership with them, that, that they have access across my property to get to their property. That's at the Register of Deeds. It's with the par, with the property. That'll still always be there. Um, I guess I, uh, oh, another, I, I actually have, uh, the permit for the water that you were talking about, uh, uh, and it's, and it'll be, uh, I'll be turning that in with my, uh, preliminary plat tomorrow. I have also, uh, uh, permit for, uh, access off of, off of the road from the Highway Department. Those are all documents that I have.
I'm going to stop you just for a second. So this is to move to approve a vacation of an easement, that we might not be able to give that vacation, because if it's a binding agreement, we can't move an easement that has agreements of other people on it, and, and as a Commission, if that agreement is a legal document. So I guess we need to see if, when we vacation this easement-
It's a different easement, Deb. The Towering Pines is an agreement between the Mills and, and, uh, the Fords. This other easement that they're talking about is solely just, uh, the owner of the property that David owns.
Yeah, it's a totally different.
So the move to, move to approve the vacation of an easement, we're not vacating the easement with the, that has the Mills on it?
No. It's the purple one on the screen, ma'am. That's the one we're talking about.
And, and what she was talking about is, is the Towering Pines one, which is the blue on the-
Right here.
On the west.
Okay.
This is, this is Judy Lang speaking. Yes, I totally agree with Mr. Grover that the, uh, the easement under discussion today is completely upon the land he has purchased from Mills Family Partnership.
Yeah. Okay, for some reason, I was thinking it was the top part, the one that was on the top before this, not the middle one, that we were vacating that one, and then we were giving him this one.
Yes, yeah.
But we're not.
Yes, we are. Yeah. But it's, it's all on my-
Property, and none of them have anybody else's name on the agreement except his. You saw the, that when, when we vacate the easement, the only name on that easement agreement is yours. You didn't give anybody easement across your property in the surrounding area. Brittany, am I correct? Okay, that's all I need to know. All right.
It, our only concern is that Mr. Grover's, uh, proposed easement for his new development is that it does intersect with, that is, connect to Towering Pines. He's right. Most sane people would not choose to use Towering Pines if they had access to his new road. I agree with him on that. His access to his proposed Lot A is the only one that would depend upon access and continual use, I would say, of Towering Pines. I have a few ideas of how he could actually mitigate that for his new buyers. Uh, but that's all in the future. I see that happening.
All right, so let's go back to the vacation of easement then. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drew.
And I'd like the floor after, if I get a second of my motion. I'd make the motion to approve, uh, the vacation of the easement.
Moved by LaCroy.
With one condition.
You have a second?
He's got one condition.
Yeah, he said that.
With a condition.
You have a second?
I just, I'll second, uh, for discussion.
Okay, and Commissioner LaCroy?
Thank you. I look at this as, this is a relocation of an existing easement that was put in many, many years ago. Um, we just got confirmation with residents that, yes, this, that road's on your property, and an agreement was made for their access and so forth, and that is not going to go away. The only thing that's, that's been clarified is that road will be to access to one lot, correct? Over by Bob Drew's. But as far as the, the existing, uh, easement, we're just relocating. Just relocating. We're not taking it away, changing, just moving it down the road a little bit. Bottom line, in my book. Uh, the rest of the stuff, I think you're going to have to, you've got the agreements and so forth. I'm okay with relocating. It's, it's just moving it down. It's actually making it safer. It was existing for years. That's all. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
I just want to let Judy know that this is just, uh, the beginning of the process relative to how that Lot A is going to get, uh, accessed. You know, I think you'll have some input in there, so what we're doing today is not going to have any impact, other than he's just going to relocate the legal access to Towering Pines. Is it Towering Pines?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a motion by LaCroy, second by Roskin. Uh, roll call, Ms. Kara.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Roskin.
Aye.
Hadcock. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, Commissioners, and Mr. Grover. And we will be in touch with Brittany and Jason, and we look forward to working with you all on this project.
Thank you, Ms. Judy and Jackie. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have items from the public. None. How about executive session, uh, S D C L one dash twenty-five dash one and dash one twenty-five dash two, section three. And I think we got it all. All in favor, oh, roll call.
I need a motion first.
Go in executive session.
Go in executive session per-
LaCroy.
Layout, yeah.
Second by Hadcock. Roll call, please.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Roskin.
Aye.
Hadcock. Aye. Motion carries. We're in executive session.
Move to go back to, uh, come out of executive session, go into regular session.
Second.
Moved by Drews, second by Roskin. Roskin. Um, roll call, please, Holly. Oh, man. DeSanto? Santo?
Aye.
Okay.
Back on.
Drews.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Roskin.
Aye.
Hadcock.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, John, if you'd like to come up with your motions, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Morrell, Pennington County Human Resources. So I've got a couple of motions I'd like to offer for consideration. Um, the first is this, to approve the hiring of a, uh, registered nurse, Nicole Winkler, at grade nineteen, step ten, starting pay of twenty-nine oh nine per hour, effective October nineteenth, twenty twenty.
So move.
Second.
A motion by Drews, second by LaCroy. Uh, roll call, please.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Roskin.
Aye.
Hadcock. Aye. Motion carries. Next one, John.
The second motion I have is this, uh, to place Holly Hennies at grade twenty-one, step fourteen, with a bi-weekly wage rate of two thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars and eighty cents, effective with the November fifteenth, twenty twenty pay period.
Move, approve.
Moved by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. Uh, roll call, Ms. Holly.
Santo.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Roskin.
Aye.
Hadcock. Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Move to- adjourned?
Second.
Moved by-
Hadcock.
Hadcock, second by LaCroy. I'll, I'll, roll call, Holly.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Roskin.
Aye.
Hadcock. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.